All right, it's six o'clock. So if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda?
I move that we approve this evening's agenda.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda. It seems kind of echoey in here. How about now? A little better, you guys? All right, good enough. Okay, on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Jesse.
Great, thanks, Board President Wheelerlander, other Board Directors, student representatives, community members, students and staff, and parents and guardians. Start off, we, feels like more than two weeks since the last time we had a board meeting, but anyway, we had to open a house about 10 days ago and held that SHS High School. It was a kickoff for the school year showcase for the clubs and activities that they have at our high schools, as well as for the High Climber football game. So, very well attended. I think each year has its bring its own flavor for that event, and this year seemed to be a lot of students actually getting out and finding out about the clubs and activities that we offer. I thought it was great because it was a lot of student-led conversations. So if you were interested in a club and activity, a lot of students are there, some staff are also there, in particular from SHS. I want to thank them for being there. It's really nice to welcome our families into what we offer for our students. And then also thank you students for leaning in and like giving your time and effort. It was really positive, just had a nice light air to it, and it was good. So, I enjoy it, it's got a lot of pep to it. And then the football team did really well and beat North Thurston High School, so go High Climbers. This year, we're doing what we call round tables. They're events where we host at each of the schools in order to bring the school's community closer to the district. You know, the school district is comprised of schools, and parents and guardians, you know, they're very passionate about the particular school that their student goes to, and so it gives an opportunity to hear from a teacher or another staff member, the principal, myself and a board director or two, to get up there, answer some questions. This, last week, it was at Bordeaux Elementary, it was really nice. I want to say a special thanks to Principal O'Neil, as well as the third grade teacher, Bree West, who was up there, handled the questions very well. And also a special thanks to Board Directors Gilmore and Dale, and Jeff Slakey from KMass who was the one that emceed the event. So, lots of good questions, got into some very specific things to Bordeaux, but also some district-level questions. And so we're really trying to channel like, okay, what's going on at this particular school? How can we provide those services that best meet the needs of the students? And we had some parents and guardians in the audience who most certainly wanted to have some questions answered and stayed late to ask more questions, so it was really nice. Shelton Promise, if you haven't heard, we are the recipients of a special, very special grant that the state legislation provided, Evergreen State College. So, any student who graduates from Shelton, the Shelton School District last year, and also this year, can go tuition-free to Evergreen State if they meet the eligibility or enrollment requirements. So, that's really wonderful. And then additionally, the books, the cost, if you do live on campus, is also scaled based on the income level of the family. So, it's a great program. We're going to have some more information. I believe an event is coming up October 13th. You can always check out the website for that. I'll be meeting with the President of Evergreen State coming up as well, just to find out some more and make sure we're coordinated in all our efforts. But I have to let you know, so previously, two years ago, we only had three students from the school district go to Evergreen State. We have 51 students enrolled in Evergreen State. That's one in seven graduates from the school district that are going to Evergreen State tuition-free for college. And so, really an amazing program, lots to celebrate there, more information to come. And so I just wanted to give a shout-out. And then last, it is school improvement plan season. Our schools will be coming through this fall and into the winter to showcase what their goals are and their educational plans, the programs and services they're providing to grow our students.
All right, thanks, all good stuff. Okay, on to number four, community comments. As part of the regular school board meeting, the Board welcomes community members to make public comment in person and/or by phone as conditions allow. Please see the full script with call-in instructions and guidelines for community comments displayed on the screen above. And we have one, Mr. Doug Peterson.
Hey there. Doug Peterson, 1130 Fairmount Avenue, also pastor at Faith Lutheran Church here in town. I just came to share three things. One, just appreciation, just so that you know, this community, most of us, we're just cheering you guys on. We love our schools, we love our kids, we love our families, and we just want you guys to do your best to help our families do their best. So, thank you. Second of all, I want to say thank you, particularly on behalf, our church works with some vulnerable populations. We do a lot with immigrant populations, a lot with homeless populations, and a lot with LGBTQIA+ populations. And I want to thank you for providing safe spaces for all those people as best you can. It's hard to do that in schools. I can't imagine the variety and the pressures and the needs and stuff, but just providing a safe space, it's something that we try to do as a church, and I feel like we have partners in that as the schools try to do the same thing. So, thank you very much for that. And the third thing I want to just ask is, on behalf of my teacher friends, teachers are really important, so everything that you can do to help make sure that our teachers stay employed and feel supported and loved and cared for and like to have a job next year, just, teachers are the heart of the schools and do everything you can to support them and keep them on their rolls. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to reports and recognition. 5.01, the Evergreen Elementary School Improvement Plan with Paula Kennedy.
Good evening to all of you on the Board. Superintendent Jesse, I'm Paula Kennedy. I have my multilingual assistant, Kat Kelly, here, and I have Cesar and Aurelia, who will be reading to you at the end of this presentation. So, Evergreen has a lower enrollment this year, we're at 351 students, and so the result of that is a few less staff members, so we're at 47 staff members. Actually, our other stats did not change that much in percentages, our stats have stayed pretty much the same with the lower number. So, as we go on, I do want to share with you our goals. It is very exciting to be able to say, and I did see you in June of last year, and I talked about our goals, and so when we got our final ELA scores, we rose to 21% of our third-grade students meeting grade level on the state standards. So, if you look at the graph, this goes from 9.5 in 2021 to 21% last year, and our goal this year is 30%. So, the gold part of the graph is where we're headed, and I have no doubt we will make it there. So, it's very exciting to us, and you will see the evidence of that in just a few minutes. Also, our other goal was absences, and so we're really working on reducing chronic absenteeism, and that's 18 or more absences. So, that is a little bit tougher, and so we have shown growth in that, but once you get up to that 81%, getting those last percentages, so we chose to do 85% and really concentrate on those students that are between 20 and 40 absences, and that will get us to that 85%. So, we're working on that. Oh, there we go. Did I go too far? No. It's just choosing when to. All right, to get to 30%, as you knew, last year we did acceleration team, we are expanding it this year. We will be serving up to 60 students in second through fourth grade in our acceleration team, which is our after-school reading program. And we are also working really diligently on our daily word study in K through fourth grade. It's one program for K through second and a different program for third through fourth, with many supports in that program. The third piece is goal-setting for students and staff with monitoring and celebrations. Very important that everybody has their goals, and we know where we're going and how we're getting there, and we're monitoring our growth towards that. So, we have set meetings for all of those. I'm learning. Okay. So, to get to our attendance goals, this is, when you get down to these last few students, this is oftentimes chronic attendance over years that we're working with. So, we're really working on looking at the students' story, strength, and needs, meeting families where they're at to help them to develop habits of coming to school and reduce all barriers. We are also celebrating success with academics, attendance, behavior through individual, class, and whole-school reward systems. And all staff and students participate in daily morning meetings, which is a way to really build community throughout the school. This is not my friend. Okay, so, I am just so excited to share with you, our third-grade students have been working on personal narratives about a memory they have in their lifetime. So, I have two students here, one student represents our English program, and one student represents our dual-language program in third grade. So, first, we have Cesar, who represents our dual-language program, and he is going to read his personal narrative to you. Is that a good spot?
Want to put this right here?
Yes, you can. And I'll hold this out for you. There you go. Really loud.
Do you want me to?
Mm-hmm, really loud.
One time I was with my cousins and we went to eat dinner with our grandparents. I felt happy because I knew it was going to be fun. After we ate tacos, our friends came over and went off opening video games.
Slow down just a little bit, okay?
Later, we went to the store for our parents so we could get the ingredients to make tacos. My grandpa showed us how to make them. They taste, they smell so good, they tasted even better. That night, we were all so tired, so we sat on the couch and watched TV. We fell a little asleep because it was a scary movie time. I went home and had to, I had the best time with my family. When I went to sleep, I dreamed about everything that happened. It was the perfect day with my family. From then on, I watched a scary movie.
Thank you, Cesar. Good job. That's very good. Now we have Aurelia.
My Disneyland vacation. What do you like to hear about my first-ever time going to Disneyland? I was six years old at Disneyland, and I was running on the concrete to get to the last ride that me and my family didn't go on. And I was kind of scared because it was dark at night, and at the time, I was scared of the dark. And we put hydrogen peroxide on the cut, and that hurt a lot. By then, I was feeling a little better, but then we found out my chin was scarred. After a few months, it was almost healed, but I was scared for life, and I was also scarred. When I push on it, it still hurts sometimes. In the end, it does not bother me to tell the story to people. I also learned that every scar tells a special story, whether or not you know that story. I am nine years old right now, and that happened when I was six, so three years ago, and that's one of life's most traumatic experiences, is getting a scar, because it will be there forever on your skin unless it's a mental scar, and it will be forever with you.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Ms. Gilmore.
For both the literacy and absences, you had just, when Bordeaux presented, they shared some of their, what celebrations look like for students at the school, and I was hoping you might share some of those, if you have any examples.
Yeah. So, for academics, we do celebrations every month. We celebrate their books they've read, and so for every 10 books they read, they turn in, it's like a book log, and it goes into a drawing, and we draw students. So, about five students from every grade level get to come and pick up new books through the drawing for reading the books, and so we're really trying to promote reading just in general. And then for attendance, which is a big piece of it as well, we have awards that go out for 100% attendance daily for classrooms, the percentage of their pom-poms, awards for the grade level that gets the most, the highest attendance in the week. We do monthly attendance awards to students for two or less absences. So, every student that has two or less absences gets a monthly attendance award, and it starts over the next month. So, it's not like once you have two absences or more, you're done. You always have a chance to win it. And then we also send postcards home to parents for, if a student gets 100% attendance, we send them home saying, "Thank you for getting your student to school." And then also, academic, I'm going to go back to the academic, something we started last year that I'm just so excited about, and these students started it last year also, is we have presentations every month. So, at the end of every unit, the students, the whole school presents their writing. And so we share our writing with another classroom or another grade level, and it allows them to share their academic work, and it's more meaningful to do it, knowing that you're going to get to share it with your next-year peers. And we will be inviting parents to that this year as well.
I was going to jump in. I want to thank both of the students for coming up and doing such a great job of presenting your stories, and you both look so professional, and you both did a wonderful job of speaking. So, thank you for taking the time to come and share your writing with us and your stories. Because that was wonderful to hear. And then Paula, I really appreciate the goals that you're setting, and that's significant growth that you all saw last year, and then to aim for 30% this year, that's wonderful. I love the acceleration team, and thankful to the staff, the teachers, who are staying after school and providing support for that program. And then I did, I wonder if you could share at all, without maybe getting too personal, but I know with attendance, you know, there's issues. Can you give us an example of what some of our families are facing and how the schools help support that? Because I don't know if we all fully understand what that entails.
So, some of our families, you know, their families are in another area, another country. And so, it's sometimes hard when they have a hardship, a health hardship, they have to go home and visit, and that takes, sometimes students are gone for 20 days when that happens. And so, we've really been working hard with partnering with them to develop ways to get those students that, when they have to make those adjustments, to get those students in school, that's something we didn't do before, but get them in school in the other country, and then bring those school records back, so they're not missing out on school in between. And that has been very successful last year, and I had to learn how to do that, but in doing that, in developing that system, it has helped tremendously to not lose that learning time. It doesn't show in our attendance, but it does show in our growth, because those students are not learning, they're losing educational time. So, our families do have those hardships, because oftentimes, they have to travel, and that's very difficult. The other hardship we have is, we have an exceptionally, well, you can look at our free and reduced rates, and so sometimes we have some families that it's a struggle to get to school, and so that has been difficult as well. And so we supply other options to get to school. We've partnered with Cedar High, not Cedar, excuse me, Choice High School, so some of the Choice students walk some of our students to school to help, and we've created partnerships as such to increase the attendance by just creating partnerships with the other schools and students to develop ways for students to get to school.
Thank you, I appreciate, just learning a little bit more.
Yeah.
Just real quick, thank you so much. Those numbers are incredible, and those goals are really ambitious, and I love that. And so, how can parents and community members help support and encourage those goals? And I heard a little of the outreach towards parents with attendance, but how do you pull parents into that to help achieve those goals? Thanks.
So, one of the ways that we're trying to really help parents to understand is, we're having a curriculum night on Thursday night to really go over the curriculum, so that we can partner with them, and they can understand what these words of the week are, and how important they are, and how the word study, the foundations of reading are so important. And that's going to be our start. And so we arrange that in a way that it has sessions, so if a parent has three kids in our school, they can make it to every single classroom. So, that's one of the ways.
That's incredible, thank you so much. That's amazing.
So, and then it's really educating people, I mean, and how they can help. And then we've created a lot of things to send home in their book bags that parents can access, and we teach them how to use them. So, another piece was our kindergarten jump-start program. Our kindergarten students that were coming in had all these manipulatives to practice with during the summer, so that when they came in, they had a little jump-start, when they came in to jump-start, they had a jump-start. So, that was useful as well. Thank you.
So, to the two kids, first of all, there's a whole lot of people super proud of you right now. Nice work, knocked it out of the park, way to go. Ms. Kennedy, the lofty goals yet attainable are outstanding. You obviously put a ton of thought and effort into this, getting everybody to participate in goal-setting, that gives your entire school a north star that everybody gets to see, and I think that that's incredibly important. And then taking the time and energy to actually navigate two countries' worth of education systems to make sure that these guys aren't missing any school. I don't know if I can pat you on the back enough. So, thank you. I can't wait to see where this goes, and I, for one, am very proud of you also.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, kids, you can go sit down. And a budget update with Quinn Sherman.
It's always hard to follow kids, just wanted to put that out there. Good evening. I wanted to walk through kind of where we're at in the current process for closing last year and starting this year. As schools started up, we all started a new fiscal year, the end of our fiscal year is August 31st. Which way? Solid, thank you. Thank you, sir. So, we've seen this graph before, I just wanted to let you know that as we're finalizing closing the books, there's a lot of general entries that need to happen to kind of balance out transactions in the right funds and in the right year, so that's all happening now. We still on track to end, probably outperform that negative 2.2 that we've been talking about by a little bit. And with moving those transactions, we'll probably have to bring back some small budget extensions to the General Fund and the Capital Projects Fund due to the updating of our accounting practices and accounting for all the outstanding accounts payable that generates more liabilities. And so as we shift those into the appropriate funds, we might have to come back for some budget extensions, which is just some paperwork. My understanding, that's pretty common at Shelton, I've done that a lot, most districts do, because you've made that plan for this year's expenses August a year ago, right? Kind of your best guess of what would happen that year. So, it's not out of the ordinary at all. Let's see, like I said, we should hit that negative, our goal for the negative fund balance, and then we're still on track to have a positive any fund balance into this fiscal year. The other thing that's happening is we have some new staff in some of the buildings, so we're also finalizing September's first count, and so we're going out this week to kind of double-check and sit with some staff to make sure those numbers are right before we bring back and report those off to you guys. I think that's really all I have. It's kind of a quick update, we're kind of in the middle of that process, it's a lot of, hard to follow kids, a lot of boring accounting happening right now in the finance office, which is pretty normal, so like I said, it's hard to follow kids. But any questions you have about what's happening right now?
I do, and it's not really about this, but since I've got you up here.
Sure, okay.
I've been going to a lot of volleyball matches, and last week, we happened to play Yelm High School, and Shelton hasn't typically played Yelm, and we know a few of the families just from my daughter's playing volleyball and knowing some of the other girls. And it was interesting conversations that happened after that, because the Yelm School District has not passed a levy, I think, a couple of times.
Right.
And so they have to transport their students themselves, and that was their student athletes. And they've also had to cut some clubs. And so it just generated some conversation, or I've had questions about that, because people get confused as to why athletic transportation would be cut because you didn't pass a levy, and how that actually fits into our budget processing, because we don't see, you know, athletic transportation, you know, with levy fund. When we see a budget kind of summary, it doesn't list that out explicitly, so I didn't know if you could help explain or better educate.
Yeah, sure, that's a great clarifying question. All athletics and activities are funded out of your local levies, and so that's the transportation, that's the gear, the referee, all that stuff is funded, the coaches' salaries, all that's funded, not by the state, it's not part of basic education, it's funded by everyone's local levies. So, when Yelm had a double levy failure, they had to make some cuts, and parents have to then chip in and transport their own students to their events. That is an unfortunate and common thing that happens with a double levy failure. It just really kind of gut your athletic programs and a lot of your clubs, because there's no funding for it in the community anymore. And so, I think a handful of times, we've shown a graphic about what a dollar looks like from the levy, and in Shelton, 17 cents for every dollar kind of goes to athletics and activities to support those things and keep those going, and keep those experiences going on for students in our school district.
Yeah, because I know the athletics and clubs are very important for just student engagement and things like that. So, just to clarify again, so when the state gives its funding for basic education, it does not include any of those extra things, like athletics and ASB? ASB, you know, robotics club, anything like that that might take something extra?
All of the cooler extracurricular activities that everyone experiences and looks forward to are all funded by local levies. That is a hundred percent true.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification.
No, that's great. What other questions you have?
Um, there was one warrant, and I don't have it in front of me, but?
Oh, okay.
The ACN, I believe it was, there's like a double listed warrant, same amount, two different places.
Sure. Um, yeah, $284,000. That is, I can see how it looks like a double. Um, we are paying a vendor through an electronic payment, through an ACH. And so we have to fund the account that holds the ACH dollars. So we actually have to write a check to ourselves. So one of those is the check being written to ourselves to put into this bank account that then is swept through an ACH. That's actually just one expense. So we're working with the county, and that's a control for the county because all of the county, all the school district's, um, money is held with the county in one big account. And so we don't have access to that account with everyone's money. We have a separate account we have to fund for ACH's electronic payments. It's a great clarifying question. Of course.
Any other questions? You may be seated.
Okay, thank you, sir.
All right, 5.03, report from the student school board representatives, and we will start with Alan.
Yeah, we've, uh, got quite a bit of stuff going up, going over at Cedar right now. Today we had a visit from the Shelton Promise people. We had Munir come over talking about, uh, well, just kind of telling what they told us, the last year's seniors about how good and cool and awesome the Shelton Promise is and how we should definitely consider it, even if we, uh, if, especially if we don't know exactly where we're gonna go after school, after high school ends. So I'd really recommend for all the seniors out there that you look into the Shelton Promise. It's, it's a really good promise. I'd be convinced. We also had, uh, something from the New Tech Network called a full value contract. We've started a, an advisory, we've been explaining that and how it connects to our Cedar agreements. We've actually, uh, we've actually made it so that the students explain it to each other. We've had seniors explain it to juniors, juniors explain it to seniors, and then sophomores and freshmen explain it to each other. So we've had that, just to sort of integrate that, uh, the aspect of us being a New Tech Network school with, uh, the things that we've come up with on our own, uh, which is our Cedar agreements. Uh, ASB campaigns will be starting next week. This week is just for students to sign up to run for ASB. We've also started having, there's been a lot of conversation going on between students and staff at the school, especially considering the fact that we now share the, share our principal with Choice. We've had, we've had Bruni come into our, enter our classes and we've, we've had a lot of conversations, a lot of one-on-one conversations too, about, uh, about just how the whole transition has been going. And they've been pretty positive so far, pretty constructive. We also have, our senior club is already organizing events for October, so stay tuned for that. Very soon we'll have, we'll have things going on. We've, the seniors have been super excited. As a senior, I can say that we've been super excited for everything, especially for this year. And we're really looking forward to bettering the school, not just, not, not really for ourselves, but more so for the students to come in the future. Sort of making sure that those future generations have a, have a Cedar to go to that supports them in the way that they need to be supported. We've also, uh, yeah, uh, I think it was tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow will, the Cedar students will be going over to Evergreen and they're gonna learn how to help kids read, read their books. So that's, that's pretty fun. Also, our ambassadors have also already gotten organized in order to help build up our school culture even more, especially in these, in these rough times when Cedar has gone through so much change, to make sure that the core culture remains the same. Our art class has been working on posters on the Cedar agreements. I've made, I think, like two and other students have made even more of them. And we've also had a few Cedar graduates come back to visit our classes just to sort of see what's going on, because that's just how engaged they are. Like, they can't stay away, even when, even when they're in college, they can't stay away. And our teachers have been, I really want to applaud our teachers for working really hard despite how, how much the workload has increased on them since the, uh, since the, uh, the changes that have been going on. So I'd really like to applaud, applaud all of the teachers there at Cedar.
So I kind of have like a lot to say and Jesse did cover a little bit of it, but, uh, we had our first home football game, which had a huge turnout and a lot of school spirit. And we actually won, which was really, really nice for our first game. And we even had a couple of our leadership kids out there in the student section trying to hype everybody up and get things going. And it seemed to work really well, so we'll probably continue to do that. And then before the game, as Superintendent Jesse mentioned, we had our open house and our club fair, which some district officials were present at. And in my opinion, it went really well. We had a lot more club involvement this year than we have in recent years and a lot more people are wanting to get involved and do things at our school, which makes the environment and the atmosphere a lot more exciting and fun. And a lot of our clubs have kicked off so far and the spirit and pride that we have this year is already better than in past years. I don't think I've seen this much school pride since my freshman year, so things are really looking up. We also have Climber Palooza this Friday after the game and it's a free event for Shelton High School students to gather, have fun, play games, dance and enjoy one another. And it's gonna be after the game, so it'll be, hopefully get our football team excited again after our WFWS game. So we'll see how that goes. We're also trying to start a tailgate tradition for students an hour before the game in the student parking lot, playing cornhole, eating snacks and face painting before the game to get people more excited and make them want to go to games. We, in past years have had a back-to-school dance, but we found that that wasn't very like, not everybody wanted to go to that, so we wanted to make something that would encourage like all types of students and a lot more people to come. Also, it's free, so everybody feels welcome. Also, there's gonna be free food, which, what teenager can turn that down? So, and in order to put on a lot of these events, our leadership team has teamed up with our SAS project management class and they've been a really good help with promotion and extra hands. And also you'll notice at the game on Friday that students are gonna be wearing floaties and swim attire, and that is because the theme for this football game is stay afloat. And our freshmen have a try a trade field trip on October 9th, which is a hands-on learning event for the freshmen to connect students to construction trades, employers and organizations. So we're getting everybody to test out what careers they'd wanna have, like nice and early, so they're not expected to pick a career path without any background knowledge. And then also Superintendent Jesse will be coming to meet with ASB and leadership on October 7th and we're really looking forward to this. So, yeah.
Hello, guys. I'm Abby and at Choice Middle School has, um, been doing testing for MAP for English and Math. Seventh and eighth grader learning about fire safety for fire future. Students are learning ways to stop fire for Mason County and they're gonna have a guest speaker. Um, uh, open doors are, are, open doors went upstairs now and they really like it. They're doing family research, family?
Resource.
Resource convention, whatever. Center pathways is for people with IEPs for 18 to 22 years old. And what they've been doing is going in the community and people have been helping them at Nifty, Thrifty, Shelton Athletic Club, Sukomish Education Center, um, Learning Center, um, School District Office, Mason, I mean, Mountain View Town?
Alliance.
Alliance Center and Mason County.
All right, thank you all. Moving on to the consent agenda, has everybody read it?
I motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
And I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a consent agenda. Okay, and then moving on to 7.01, uh, be discussion and action items, uh, proposed revised policy number 1400, uh, meeting conduct, order of business, quorum, uh, and I am apparently presenting this. Uh, it'll be our first meeting, our first reading, uh, and, uh, we will, um, I read it again next meeting and, and hopefully vote on it then. Uh, there are a couple of changes, uh, that you see if you've got your computer out in front of you. Uh, the ones in red, uh, just clarifies that there, we're only gonna have the one meeting in the following months, April, July, August and December. Uh, and then if you go a little further to the other changes, glad I printed it. Um, each, each person's comment will be limited to three minutes, which is, you know, whatever. Uh, that's what we've always done, um, or less is deemed appropriate by the president of the board. Uh, a person may not, uh, share their time with somebody else. The big thing here, personally, I would rather hear from a hundred people than one person a hundred times. Uh, I, I would like to see everybody that wants to speak, um, speak for themselves. Uh, and then the other thing is individuals calling into, to the meeting may submit requests, uh, in the morning, uh, prior to 9:00 AM, uh, the morning of the meeting. And then the last thing, the last change would be on the meeting recordings effective June 20th to 24th, uh, all regular and special meetings of the board at which final action is taken or formal public testimony is accepted, except executive or exempt sessions or emergency meetings will be audio recorded. Such, uh, such recordings will remain, uh, will be maintained for at least one year. The recording will include comments of the directors, uh, comments of the members of the public and formal public testimony is accepted at the meeting. That just kind of clarifies, um, what we're actually doing with the recordings and when we would be making recordings. Um, discussion, anybody?
Um, maybe more comment than discussion. Um, going back through this again, this is actually my one-year anniversary coming on the board. And, and the significant change, though it's not that significant, involves public comment. And, and I just want to reiterate to folks, on a big public today, the public online as well, public comment is such a vital part of what we do here. And, and so we want to keep encouraging that. We love public comment, this kind of just cleans up that language and it's not meant to discourage any form of comment, just to clean that up. And, and encourage the exchange of ideas around these very important pieces of our community. Public education is vital, communication is vital, hearing from public is vital. And so, um, I just want to keep encouraging people to do that. Reading back through it this week did remind me, and it's worth saying as you go through it, we do have a code of conduct. And so an exchange of ideas is important. Personal attacks really distract from any of that. And so I would just encourage all of us to make sure we are passionate and direct and clarifying the ideas and the policies and staying away from those personal attacks. We do it really well most of the time as a community, so.
Any other comments? I, I for one, um, as we look at the, you know, the list of, of people that are making public comments, I wish that it was filled every week. Um, I do definitely want to hear from more people. Uh, the big thing though is, uh, you know, I think that we kind of let the ceding of time to somebody else get a little bit out of hand and, and this reels that in so that we, we hear from more people. Um, we will look at this again next meeting, uh, otherwise, there you go. All right. And now we move into board member comments and I will start at the end, Mr. Dale.
Yeah, just a couple, um, high school representatives, you guys are doing a great job. Keep it up. It's one of my favorite parts, I told you before we started, to get to hear what's happening from your perspective is vital. So thank you, appreciate you guys, keep going. Um, I just keep hearing over and over in this community, what a great start to the school year. I got to participate, I think it was last week, at the round table at Bordeaux. Will get to participate at some more schools and it's exciting to be in the community, even when there's tough questions, but the, but it seems like the morale and the energy is really moving in a direction of celebrating the wins and communicating through the right channels. And it just feels like this year has started off so well. So, said it last week, but thank you to all the teachers, all of the summer work that went into that. Um, just seems like a great season at Shelton School District.
Wow, have to follow that. Great job, you guys did a fantastic job in your presentation. Evergreen is doing a great job on all their goals, so overall, keep it up.
Director Gilmore.
Good evening, thank you for joining tonight. Uh, I want to reiterate that the community round table was a lot of fun at Bordeaux and I'm really hoping to get more people at the, uh, future events. Uh, last Saturday was also general assembly for the Washington State School Directors Association, WASTA. Uh, during this event, all, uh, the ledger reps and presidents can log in and vote on, uh, what WASTA will be legislatively aligning for this upcoming session. So we voted on how we were going to align and decide for budget and, um, material supplies and operating costs again, um, lots of different things. I think there was 37 items. Moves quickly for five hours, so, but, uh, that was good and we're already headed into that next season, so.
Yeah, wow.
Director Davison.
Well, thank you for spending that much time on things like that to inform our board and to represent us, so I appreciate that you do that. Um, thank you Superintendent for your report and for Paula who's not here anymore, Principal Kennedy with the students, that was wonderful, Kat. Thank you for being up there with the students too. That, that really is one of the best things, is when we can see and hear from our actual students and, and, and hear all of the, what is actually happening in the schools and the supports that they get. I, I really enjoy hearing these improvement plans that they do each year. Um, I did go to the tailgate party, I saw Nevea there. You were doing such a great job with everything that was going on. I thought, um, there was a lot of excitement. I saw many of the school district staff there as well, walking around. My two students were there checking out all the different clubs and everything that was going on. The culinary group is always amazing with having hot dogs and cookies and just all sorts of things. So that was, it was, there was a lot of just, um, excitement and a lot of student involvement. My husband and I went to the football game afterwards too. The stands were packed, the band was amazing, the cheerleaders were great, stayed for the dance team, they were wonderful. It was an incredible win over North Thurston. I had no idea that we were gonna beat them that much, so that was awesome too, as far as the first home game. It was a, it was a lot of fun. I've been attending a lot of volleyball games, cause my two daughters do play volleyball. I wish that I had the time and the ability to go to all of the sporting events because I really enjoy seeing our students and I would say that being there, seeing our student groups, they're all being very respectful, um, and so that's nice to see. There's a lot of good sportsmanship going on and a lot of cheering, but, um, it's, it's all, everybody's being very respectful, so I, I've enjoyed that. So it has been a good kickoff to the school year and I'm looking forward to just all the things that are gonna keep going.
All right. Uh, finish this out, uh, I missed the, the first week home game, I was, uh, away. Um, I did however, watch as much of the game as Starlink would allow me, um, which is pretty cool. Uh, looking forward to getting into, involved in some of the round tables and seeing what people really have to say and what they think. Um, uh, Mr. Peterson, I wish you were still here. Uh, yes, we doubled down on the self-safe and welcoming environments for all students, staff, uh, and the public at large. It's, it's just important, as you can't even imagine, to, to feel good at school, um, and, and give all these people, you know, someplace safe to be. Um, Cedar, uh, the, you know, listening to you talk about the, you know, explaining your programs to the kid below you, you know, the see it, do it, teach it model, um, that you're gonna find, that's gonna give you a much clearer understanding when you actually have to sit and articulate how these things really work. Um, you are going to love Mr. Bruni. He's a great guy, um, and is, uh, truly loves kids and is going to be there for you all that you need. Um, awesome to hear about the school spirit at, at Shelton, um, looking forward to tailgating with everybody, uh, and, um, of course, they were gonna win. Uh, yeah, um, go climbers. Um, I've got a lot of notes, but, um, we'll go ahead and cut it off there. Uh, and with that, um, we do have an executive session, um, that we will be gone for, we'll start with 20 minutes and hope. 20 minutes, and hope. There you go.